It wasn't that much fun anyway. Item number two on the agenda is for public comment concerning any agenda that's anything that's not on the agenda. So if anybody has any questions for the council members or the planning commission, that's what this time is reserved for. So we'll talk about the zone change in the public hearing and we'll take all the public comment on those. So if there's anything that you need to talk about that's not on the agenda, you got something or are you good? Okay. Everybody good? Okay. We'll move right on to item number three. Public hearing regarding application for a zone change from RA5 to commercial for property owned by Mark and Jamie McAllister at 2850 South Highway 40. And entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
I'm open, sir.
Okay, have a move to open the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Okay, calling for the vote, seeing no. All in favor?
Hi.
We good? Okay. Got the council over here and the planning commission here, so we're all here. Okay, now we'll open the public hearing. As we hear about, what we'll do is I'll go over it so everybody knows where the property is. I presume most of you know where it is. So do you want us to just move right into the public portion? You need to come up here, state your name so we can get it in a minute. Okay, so please come up here, use the podium. You're talking to the planning commission, council members, and we'll move right into that. Anybody?
Is there a map of what's proposed?
Because we're such a small town, this is the map. Okay, so as you're coming, this is the Highway 40. This is a small commercial zone that's up around Little Sweden, okay, as a reference. What we're looking at is this property right here, down in this little triangle, and so it's where the Quonset hut is. If everybody's driven on Highway 40, you know where the little Quonset hut is. Lot of history there, and so there's been some trucking outfits there. Anybody that wants to speak for or against the zoning, please come up, state your name, and let the council and planning commission know.
My name's Lou Giles, here to represent my son-in-law and daughter. I don't have much information on this tonight. There wasn't much put out on it. I don't know if there'd been a survey map put out. I just noticed the one that Eric put up here on the board of where the property is. And on that change, it doesn't tell how many trucks they can park there. Guess I'd like to ask that question, see if they could answer that tonight at any one time. And also, if this did pass through the zoning process, if it changed anything out there in the future of what they got now, whether it be truck parking, could be a service station come in, then it had to come back to the council and the commission to have a public hearing on anything that changed out there other than what is proposed tonight. Understand they're proposing to just make commercial out of truck parking out of the Quonset hut. My first question was, do you have a map, survey map of the property, corner state? Second question was, if it does come commercial, how many trucks could park there at one time? And like I say, the third part of this was, if it changes from what it is today, did it ask to come back to the council in that motion? Did it have to come back to be heard again by a public comment? Period. Thank you. Appreciate your talking.
Thanks, Lou.
I know you guys hate seeing me coming, but here goes. My name is Stephanie Wilson-Hugh. My property borders the property located at 2850 South Highway 40, presently owned by Mark McAllister. We call it the shop lot. This piece of property has been a thorn in my side for years because property owners not complying with the use that it was zoned for. The shop was originally built for a livestock trucking company called Web Brothers. V Cummings took it away from Earn Webb in a shady deal and put heavy equipment on it. The county didn't make him move that heavy equipment because they didn't want to deal with V Cummings. So we dealt with the heavy equipment. When V died, the property went dormant for several years. The only activity on it was a pickup truck coming once in a blue moon. Then Travis Napziger bought it from the Cummings family, who claimed trucks were grandfathered on the property. They were not. Travis knew this. His lawyer Craig Powell knew this, and sold it to Daniel, Town of Daniel, but they let him stay, and our neighborhood nightmare began. There were trucks coming and going on the property all hours of the day and night. I can't tell you how many near miss accidents on Highway 40 we witnessed from all the crew trucks in and out of the shop lot when Travis had numerous, numerous trucks in it. Every time a truck came in the shop lot, they would kick up a huge dust cloud covering my house, the three neighbors on Mill Road's homes, Wanda Webb's house, or the Country Estates trailer park, depending on which way the wind was blowing. Truck headlights in our bedroom windows all hours of the night and early morning. The drivers beat on frozen brake drums, revved the truck engines, left the trucks running 24 hours a day to keep them from jelling up, and Travis made a point of racing around the shop with his jake brake on and noisy straight stacks every day and every night just to show me that he was there. I can't tell you how glad I was every time I found out he blew an engine and I got arrested for the noise for a while. The Daniel Town Council gave him the okay to have six trucks parked on the shop lot. Most of the time, there were way more. I complained to the mayor numerous times. He said, "Take pictures," and they would take care of it. On two different occasions, I took pictures to the mayor with over 10 or more trucks parked on that shop lot. And I was told that Eric would pay Travis a visit, but nothing changed until the oil field infernal started to decline. Then the trucks weren't getting any runs and most of them left. I can tell you that not one person on this planning commission or on the Daniel Town Council would have put up with what we have put up with in the past few years with Travis and his truck stop. Now Mark McAllister has bought it, thinking he's grandfathered. I understand his neighbors complained about his trucks on 3000 South, so he moved to our neighborhood. He has made some improvements on the property. He's fixed up the shop and he's laid down some mill tapings to somewhat control the dust. My concern is that he wants to change the zoning to commercial. He said he wanted to be a good neighbor. I understand he wants to put a truck repair shop there. Is that right, Mark? It will be just as bad as Travis and his trucks going day and night, and we need a noise ordinance in the Town of Daniel, Major. Once it goes to commercial, he can put any kind of business or do whatever he pleases with the shop lot, and we, as neighbors, are stuck with the commercial in our residential backyards. Would any of you or the Town Council want this in your backyards with your kids, your grandkids, and your animals? He has been given, is it called a conditional use permit?
No, it's a continued use.
Continued use permit? Okay. Wasn't sure what it was spelled. By the Town of Daniel. He does not need this property to go commercial if he wants to use it for his trucking company, unless he has an arterial motive. Rezoning this property will raise his property taxes, which will be additional revenue for the town, but in the process will depreciate our property taxes. I have contacted UDOT and talked to Brian Phillips in Austin Trip. They said as long as the use on the property or zoning does not change, they will not bother Mark, unless the trucks pulling on and off Highway 40 become a hazard to the public. As soon as the zoning changes to commercial, the use of the access off the highway will change, and the Town of Daniel and Mark McAllister obligated to contact UDOT to bring the access off of Highway 40 up to the state requirements, which it sounds like they want the turn lane off the highway. And that sounds really expensive to me. Which brings me to another problem. If this property zoning is changed, Shirley Huntsman owns the property between the shop lot, my right-of-way, Jesse Mayor's backyard, and Larry Williams' horse corrals. Shirley also owns the junkyard in front of my house. Rusty called me last week and said the guy who bought the shop lot had given Shirley a $10,000 retaining deal fee to hold the property until the shop lot went commercial so he could buy it. And put storage units on it.
That's true.
Okay, well, what we can share, which I have found out since, that storage units were only a front for Armstrong Drilling, who wants to give me the deal of the century, change my right-of-way, but roll through the Mayor's backyard, running trucks over my utilities and water lines, and make a parking lot for semi trucks and trailers. Gas and oil crew trucks on that piece of property in all of our backyards. Awol in sheep's clothing, promising to do one thing and sticking us all in the back with another. I have also been told that Armstrong Drilling and Mark McAllister own this together. Comment, Mark? Do you know anything about this? Because this came from the horse's mouth.
Who's the horse's mouth?
I'm not going to say that.
Okay, then I'm not commenting either.
Okay, now that tells me that you're right in the middle of it.
I'm not in the middle of it. It's totally different.
Mark McAllister, Shirley Huntsman, and the owner of Armstrong Drilling, which is his name, Joe? Armstrong? I'm not sure.
Oh, Rob?
Rob?
Yeah, Rob.
I don't know. I don't know who he is. They do not live anywhere near this property. They're looking for the big bucks to be made and leave our neighborhood with a big mess if this goes through. And I realize that we're only here to discuss the shop lot rezoning, but the planning commission and the Town of Daniel will be opening a big can of worms if they rezone either one of these properties to commercial. Which takes me to my final point. When I was approached by Gary Walton to become part of the Town of Daniel, I was told it was to keep big developers from putting a subdivision in every hayfield, houses on every quarter acre available, keeping commercial property out of our neighborhoods, and to keep Heber City from annexing property on the Daniel side of Highway 40 and changing the zoning to commercial. I also have a quote from Mayor Duggan, published in the Los Ex-Quaid, March 28, 2012, which reads, quote, "The primary reason for going to the trouble of incorporating and running our town, 2006, was to maintain a rural atmosphere. Most of us chose to live in the country on purpose," unquote. How many of you grew up in Daniel? I did. My family's been here since 1942. I wanted to stay the rural atmosphere that I enjoyed as a kid growing up. That's keeping commercial property out of our town. I hope the planning commission and the Daniel Town Council are still on board to keep our community a rural, residential, agricultural neighborhood community and send the commercial property seekers elsewhere. Please deny the request to rezone this property on Highway 40 to commercial. Keep it in the RA5 zone and preserve and protect our neighborhood and livestock property
I just have a quick question. My name's Tommy Stowe. I guess my question is, I was under the impression, and it's all through the grapevine hearsay, that there was going to be a right-of-way onto Mill Road from this problem. That...
This property doesn't...
Okay. And that's why I wanted to see the map, because I don't want to waste everybody's time. And they'll be not getting that it'll ever go to Mill Road.
That's not true. That's not true.
See, and that's where my biggest concern is.
That's the other piece of property I'm telling you about.
I won't say never, nothing will change. Sorry, pal.
Well, and that's where the concern would come in from my side is, as with the new school, with the new subdivision, with people, and that's what's awesome about Daniels is the tranquility of Daniels. I mean, you've got the small town, you've got this great feel. As soon as you put a right-of-way from the place where trucks can sit, they're going to be driving down 3000 South, going down to Provo that way, they're going to be going all through that. So the moment we make this kind of change is the moment that this whole thing is going to open up a can of worms. And is that what we want to do? Is that where we want to go? Not only that, is you are affecting all the house prices in the whole area. If there's a noise issue, you know, and I come from the real estate side, that's where my biggest concern is, is that, yeah, I've made a lot of money in real estate because I sold houses. My house is right there off of Mill Road. It concerns me. My kid is going to have to walk down Mill Road to go to school. That's an issue to me.
Where'd you hear there was going to be access from 40 through that?
That's the whole reason I'm here, honestly, is that it got me fired up.
Did you say that that's what you thought?
Property in front of my house and to the side of my house is the one that's got the $10,000 retainer on it. You take those trucks up through that property behind Jesse Mayor's house.
Who's trucks?
Okay, hold on, hold on, wait. Just wait, wait, wait. We can't be doing this. This is a public hearing, okay? You're talking to the council and the commission. We won't be doing this back and forth. Okay, we just need to talk, get it asked. We know how everybody feels. We're able to make a decision on it. So let's not lose control.
So that's my whole concern.
So I'm addressing a question to this person from the town. So your concern would be anything that would wrap truck traffic onto Mill Road would be negative for you?
Yes. Yes. That's exactly.
And so that's what I have written down. Is that your question, is the truck?
Because what's going to stop that from happening?
Okay. All right. Thank you.
My name is Scott Binkert. I live on Mill Road. Stephanie addressed the point about quality of life and neighbors there, that Tommy talked about, the traffic. The thing I want to talk about is, I moved up here 20 years ago, and the purpose was RA5, because that's what we want. Stephanie read the Duggan quote. If we don't break from RA5 to a commercial, we're breaking the trust of the people that bought up here beforehand. We have to go with that. Number two is, if we give this a change to commercial, we're opening up a can of worms, as I said, it's a slippery slope. What happens if somebody comes by, we do this commercial, next person comes and says, "Well, you did it for them, you got to do it for me." Then pretty soon, you're going to have what happened at Draper and Harriman. And that's not what we incorporated in the town for. Traffic problem, I've already been taken off by a truck turning on dump trucks. We get those trucks, something goes wrong, semis are a lot bigger than a dump truck. So there's a public safety concern here that I have not seen addressed. So with that, I would vote that we do not change our zoning, just because somebody wants to nice the property and do this. We have a commercial zone. Let's keep the plan that we have and not screw it up. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
Is there a line?
Step right up, state your name, you're on.
My name's Christine Bellers, I live in the corner of Mill Road and 3000 South, and somebody addressed, or Scott talked about a public safety issue. I've been here for 24 years and a little bit, and it was a few years ago, I don't know, I can't remember exactly, maybe Jacob, but when the trucks started going down the gravel pit, and we noticed an increase of these big trucks, dump trucks as well as semis, going down to our corner and turning down to the dump, or down to the gravel pit. We also get big trucks down to the dump. My little dog, Poochy, was clipped by a big truck three years ago. We used to live in a corner there where little dogs, little children, little anybodies could walk across and not worry about getting hit by a lot of traffic, and I've noticed a huge increase of traffic since, obviously, in the last 25 years or so. It has affected me public safety-wise with my little dog. And I was a long time coming back with that little dog. It may be a little dog to you guys or something not important, but that's family to me. We've got little children in our neighborhood now, and I can easily see somebody getting hurt on that corner there if that is going to be changed. I say we keep it the way it is, and thank you.
My name's Chelsea Gattrell, and I live right by Tommy. And I just wanted to say that right where they're talking about this address is, yeah, the safety issue, and of course, I do real estate as well, and that will plummet our property values, but we have 20-plus children right there that catch the bus. So for me, that's a huge issue. We have kindergartners, we have preschoolers, all the way up to the middle, junior high, even high school, but that for me, to have the trucks and strangers and all that coming right in, but the traffic, we've got, and that will keep going up because there are still homes that have not had people move in. We will have more children there, right there, and so for me, that's an issue. Thank you.
Eric, just a quick, some of the people have commented, is that, are the comments with regards to the rumors that may what be happening, or are we talking about the specific Mark McAllister property? Because I think some of these, some of what's being said tonight might be mixing both of those issues together. Yeah?
Mayor, some of what people have talked to me about is the concern that should, Stephanie addressed it a little bit, but if this property should be changed to commercial zone, then we are at the mercy of whoever purchases that from Mark and whatever kind of business goes in there. And a different kind of business than Mark's would generate a lot more traffic. And so that becomes the question. And there was also the question brought up that a business right there would influence people to want to use 3000 instead of possibly going out. You know, it's just going to channel more traffic with different kinds of businesses in a commercial zone. So that's the question, is not what he plans to do now, but if that property is rezoned commercial, the change in the community at that point. And it also creates that whole situation where commercial is sort of a fungus. And so if we create this little section of commercial for this applicant, then it's easier for the next person to say, "Well, now I'm commercial on two sides, and so, you know, we just have these whiny neighbors, I should be able to have my commercial here." And that was addressed a little bit by some of the people we discussed.
Okay. Eric?
I'm new to the community. My wife and I moved up here in September. I teach at the local high school, and one of the big reasons why I chose to come up here to teach is because of the ruralness of the community. My wife grew up in Woodland, in Canvis area, and we wanted to have that kind of community. And I feared that if you, just what you said, if you put it in commercial here, and why we chose Daniel over all the rest of the Heber Valley is that we love the idea of having the rural community and that you guys had plans to keep it that way. So I'm concerned about that becoming commercial and then growing. Right now, we live in that new community, Heber Meadows, and I have young kids, and who knows what happens when they're, you know, five, six, 10 years down the road. Is this still going to be a nice place for them to run around? But I think it is now. You know, I think, maybe, I don't know if McAllisters at all, but if they own it, maybe nothing happens, but if, like you said, they change his possession, it'd be a real concern down the line. So I absolutely love this community, and I would probably hate to see it change too much. So, thank you.
Okay. I'll check over your camera. She's not reading that law.
My name's Mark McAllister, and I'm the owner of the rezoned property. We're talking about the rezoning. I'd like to clarify a couple of things. I don't have any access from 3000 South.
You are had.
Have no access from Mill Road. Therefore, I will not have any truck traffic entering my property from Mill Road. It will all be Highway 40. Another thing to think about and keep in mind, Heber City has annexed and rezoned all along Highway 40, clear from where the Town of Heber used to start. From the one stop, on the east side of Highway 40, 30th Country Meadows Trailer Park, that is zoned commercial. Also, as you come up the west side of Highway 40, it's also zoned commercial all the way to where Heber Meadows starts. And Heber Meadows is in Heber City. So therefore, I will have, I mean, I'm not asking for like the whole, a whole big piece of Daniels be rezoned to commercial. I'm also trying to keep my property used in the right, so there's a continued use there of operating a trucking business out there. And to be able to justify the more property that I own of the building, I would like to be able to do truck repairs to the public besides maintaining my own fleet. And that's where I'm asking for the rezone, is to, just to bring this property that's already being used as a commercial property, where its grandfather used, just to get it used as a, as a commercial zone. I would like to have grandfathered commercial. It never was grandfathered, can it?
Continued use.
It's got to continue to use. It's always been a residential, as long as that property's been used.
Used the old word, continued use.
Continued use.
Yeah.
It was used, it kept being, well, there's continued use.
Hey, Mark, did you have any contact with UDOT with regards to what Stephanie had mentioned with regards to UDOT access changing if it was rezoned? Have that?
I didn't ask UDOT what would happen there.
I've not heard that.
I fell back to them and asked them what my, what my highway right-of-way width was. That was all I asked them. I didn't ask anybody anything to do with the rezone. And if there's any other questions, I'll answer some for anybody that's here while I'm up here.
Yeah, I live in Kentucky State, and I...
Wait, wait, can I get you to say your name so we can get it all?
Oh, yeah, Rick Walsh.
Hey, Mark's going to take you.
What I'm concerned about, you're putting into a candy shop over there. You look around, I don't care what, Summit County, Wataht County, Utah County, and I've worked in a candy shop before. The oil, the diesel, the grease, the huge parts. Pretty soon, it'll look like a dump over there, and I, no, I'd get it zoned and leave it the way it is, because I've been around it and seen it, and people have said, "Yeah, we would clean it up." But after the zone and everything's fine, it's all forgotten, if not beaches and creamings. And that's what I'm concerned about. Like I say, the way it is now, I can hear them trucks start throwing a jake brake on way above the port of entry coming each direction, and then when they do get there, and they'll line a car, and people try to go around them, and they're just, I've seen close calls, and I mean mighty close. One voice, what we're saying here, trying to convince the board and everything, no, I don't, I hope, I hope they don't give a voice through.
I have a question.
Okay, hold on. I missed this question. What was your question?
Yeah, there...
I was writing down questions, I didn't get it. What was your question?
My question?
Yeah, what was your question?
Oh, about cleanliness and everything, and putting in a candy shop.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question. My name's Dave Walsh, and I want to know if you open that business, if you're going to blacktop it, the property over there, because I live... I have a question. My name's Debbie Walsh and I wanna know if you open that business, if you're gonna blacktop it, the property over there, because I live straight across the street and I have asthma and every time all that dust and dirt gets up, gets into my lungs, causes me to have an asthma attack and I end up going to the hospital. Well, I can't afford to go to the hospital three or four times a year. So I wanna know if you're gonna blacktop it, top it, and how long you're gonna allow those trucks to run? Twenty-four hours, two or three hours or what the deal is? And how many are you, how many trucks are you planning having in there at a time?
Um, as far as blacktop is concerned, I, uh, I think that the building, the code says that it has to have hard surface. So, I mean, asphalt, asphalt two and a half acres would be more than the feasibility reasons. I don't, I don't plan on asphalting it soon, but I do, I have been doing what I can to keep the dust down already. I've got some rural milk spilt spread around in there so far, trying to help that out.
Well, last Friday I was leaving my property and there was somebody over there in your property and he had a machine going and all that dust was headed right towards my house.
To lay it down, it's gonna cause some dust at first to prevent the dust later.
Well, am I supposed to keep my windows closed because the dust comes into my house?
Trying to better things, you're gonna have a little bit of time in between.
Well, if I have an asthma attack, are you guys gonna pay for me to go to hospital? No.
What happens when the farmer next door compiles his field and dished it up? He does the same thing.
I don't live next, the field next to me, they've never farmed.
Okay, well, I'm not gonna argue.
The commercial for Heber.
That's, that's my answer. That's what I can do at this point. And as far as how many trucks I'm gonna have parked there, I, I don't, I can't give you a number. Uh, I have five trucks, first for myself, my business. If somebody brings a truck to have it repaired, they need it. They're gonna bring it and drop it off. I'm gonna repair it and then it's gonna leave. I, I don't see that I'm gonna turn it into a junkyard.
We're doing quite the opposite of that out there already.
There's, uh, rules and regulations from the EPA on storing your used oils and stuff like that. Anyway, I mean, it's been going on since nineteen sixty-five already. The building's been there, but we're not really changing too much. I'm just asking for the rezon to get into the proper zone, to get the, the property in the right use.
I'm Jim Wilson here, where your property, my estate. So let me ask you a question. If you own the property, if you own the house that I live in, or Jesse's house, or the Webb's house, and you live there, if you want somebody to do that to you, then why don't you do it to your property? Just asking a question. I don't think I should have to listen to them trucks all night long and come in and out of there all, all the time.
I, I do. I already do. I do it at my house.
I mean, I've done construction for thirty-eight years. I'm tired of hearing it all the time. Yep. I mean, you've been a great neighbor so far, I'll admit. You put mail tannings in, you've done a hell of a lot more than Travis has done. And I, and I do appreciate that. You've been very nice to work with. But my concern is if we got you go commercial, everybody else that owns five acres, are you gonna wanna put three acres into commercial somewhere in the town of Daniel?
Well, I feel like that I'm doing it on a highway corridor that's noisy, that has existing traffic on it twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And, uh, yes, I may have a truck start up and warm up for, they should only do it for ten or fifteen minutes before they leave. I don't. Sometimes you have to start a truck up and, and, or work and a lot of them let it warm up to diagnose them or troubleshoot them. It might take more time, but it's not.
What you wanted at the house for sure. Be honest.
At one time, before Nav Sigur bought the property, I wanted to build a, I wanted to buy that property and build a house there and have my business there. But I couldn't have a house and a building that was already there on the property. So I want, I wanted to be able to walk out my back door and go to work. I do it already at my house where I live.
Robert Armstrong. Would there be hours of operation if it went commercial? Would there be a time when you could start and I would have to end by?
That was also one of Debbie's questions, what your hours of operation would be.
Is it written into the town spec?
Into the code?
Yeah.
Here.
Well, that brings up another really good question on why I'm doing this.
You don't have to answer it. It was a question.
The, the reason I wanna open a shop there is because I'm really tired of, uh, working twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week with my, my trucks. And if I have a business that I can tell people that, hey, it's, it's six o'clock, I'm done working, I need to go home. In the trucking industry, people expect you twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. As far as the repair shop side of it, there will be hours of operations. I don't know what they'll be at this point, but I don't picture myself being a twenty-four hour a day mechanic there.
The commercial code doesn't designate hours?
Maybe you should.
Maybe you should.
More than always. So can he, um, I'm Trish's mayor.
Okay, is this a question for him?
Yeah, that's a question.
Okay.
So you're saying that you're not free from like ten to six, but you can have trucks running, like come and go and run and walk, right?
Yes.
Cause I just live right there and three o'clock in the morning, I hear trucks.
I am forty.
No, it's where there's like five trucks parked behind me right there. I hear them. They're already there. Yeah.
Seven to two the other night.
There, there are, there are people that, uh, there are trucks that park there right now that, uh, um, they're low times, they're early in the morning and they have to travel from Heber out to the basin area a little bit of a while. So they, they, they do come and go twenty-four hours a day. As far as the mechanic shop side of it, it's not gonna be twenty-four hour a day operations.
Mark, how many trucks are you allowed there? Is there a certain amount or do you have ten there at a time or how many there?
I think there's seven allowed there in the continued, there the, yeah.
In the continued use?
Yeah.
These trucks, Greg, you have nothing to do with these other trucks. They're just looking for a spot to pull over and I'm waiting before they go out to the basin. Is that correct?
No, they're, I'm leasing, renting the base, space and then park.
Okay.
But if they're paying you to park there, that's already commercial. And what you're doing is against the law. If they're paying you to park their trucks on your property, that's wrong. That's not, that's not a zone. Is that the continued use?
That's what, well, before us was doing, oh, we had, so that was part of it. And actually we lost quite a few. We didn't want that many.
We have not added anything, anybody out there.
We have lessened by far what's going on out there.
What kind of vegetation is, uh, between your property and the others as far as the barrier?
You mean dirt?
It, it's a dirt berm.
Berm?
Yep.
That was your answer, the same thing I had for, like digging from the house.
It was there before we bought the property.
It was existing.
Got a question. So is that, my name's Misty Giles. Uh, the continued use, is that, is that true that you can't run trucks out of there and, and take a payment for it? Is that technically? I mean.
I've, I've not had that.
Do you have a number of questions?
And I, I assume since it would happen when I bought the property that it was accepted. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Are you generating taxes off the truck sort of property in there now? Cause if, uh, it's causing a noise.
Who's that?
We need to, we need to step up here and say your name.
Right, I'm Todd Steiner. Oh, I don't know.
What's your name again?
Todd Steiner. I live right across the street from Stephanie. Christine. If we are parking trucks there and they're generating revenue, why aren't you guys getting a tax off of that right now? There should be some tax revenue generated. Why are we paying for a business to do nothing for free? Great question.
You want me to answer?
Yeah.
He is being taxed on that property in Watsatch County as a commercial already, even though it's an RA five. In Watsatch County, they tax you on your property as a use. So they don't look at the zoning in Watsatch County. They tack, they come out, they, they take a survey of your property and they tax you on that use. If it looks like it's commercial, you're paid into commercial rate.
So it's during the city, since it's in the city generating taxes?
We get a percentage off of it. Off of your property taxes. That's how, that's how we get our funds. So it's a good question though. I like it.
Maybe the question is looking forward is are you guys getting the sales taxes for the service or anything that you may be providing?
Current. Okay, yeah, another great question. Super awesome. So the way that sales tax works.
You're not a service of the user.
Right, right. And, but the way the sales tax works is the state collects it. They divvy it back. So even though there may be a gas station that's just across the border in Heber City, it's close enough to the area of Daniel that we actually get some of those sales taxes back. So it's divided out in areas. I'm sorry I even know this, you know? I'm sorry I even know this. They divvy that back to the, to the municipality. And so not necessarily everything that's in the town of Daniel, we don't get those funds. Some of that will go to Heber City in the commercial. So that's how that works as an area thing. So another great question.
So even if we do change it over to the commercial zone, we won't get a hundred percent of that as far as the tax goes?
We will not.
We will not.
Can we get, can we get, okay?
That's Christine.
Yeah.
The area at, uh, Fortieth and, uh, Mill Road West, uh, where they're doing development, that's been already zoned commercial. And considering later, there's gonna be plenty of businesses there. So.
If you're talking the new shop on the east side of the road?
To the, uh, the forty? Yeah, west, yeah. South side of forty and.
On the side by the trailer park?
Yeah, no, this should come in on, on, uh, Mill Road and west of there, you know, just north side of. Well, that's Heber City and that's commercial. So that's, that's gonna be changed over the next few years anyway. We're gonna be looking at that. We're gonna have a lot of trucks. It's gonna, yeah. It's not in the town of Daniel, but that will affect us. Just a statement.
Okay, is there any other questions?
Yeah, is this, uh, my name is Bert Baker. Is this the zoning deal gonna affect the trailer park?
Which trailer park are you?
Country State Trailer Park.
Country State?
Across the street.
It will not affect it other than, you're in the county, right?
Yeah.
I believe that Heber City just annexed up to your property line.
Yeah, they're building a building right there behind.
They are and they annex that in as commercial. You're too late. They already hit you.
Well, they're going to view the Heber City. My, I'm a caretaker for, for my eighty-four year old mother and I work at Kennicott.
Yeah, Heber City's already built that commercial as a condition of annexation when that was in. Uh, I was at that hearing. Unfortunately, mine was the only letter that was against that zone change and that annexation.
So is it, is it?
I tried.
It ain't gonna come any further from that.
Are we gonna have to move out there?
Yep, yep. Progress keeps rolling.
So I need to go back to my comment that, that came from Gary Walton. This is the reason why we did Daniel is to keep Heber City coming, coming across the grid, so to speak, and taking all the property up on the west side of forty that belonged to Daniel and doing the same thing that they've done on the east side.
Yep.
That's what we did it for.
The best, we're gonna slow it down.
That's good.
I hope so.
That's about all.
Well, it's in your, it's in the Daniel Town Council hands. It's just obvious.
But, uh, continues on and we end up taking the trailer park and, uh.
A lot of us.
Where are we supposed to go?
No place to go.
You know, I don't know at Heber City if they're planning on, that was a very, uh, political thing they did down in Heber when they took out the other trailer park. I don't know that, uh, you'd really have to ask Heber City what they feel on that.
About Pleasant Valley?
Yeah.
I used to live there too.
Yeah. And it was, it was politically, I mean, a few people lost their seats on the council over that. It was, it was a hotbed. It was, it was a big deal, so.
So I go see it in, in just, we're there for a while until it changes.
Till somebody shows up with some money probably and wants to change that use.
Yeah.
Cause that's the hard part of our job is we have, we have, everybody has their property. You have rights, they have rights. Somewhere we have to strike a balance on, on the rights of the property owners. And so somebody will have the right to do what he needs to do on his property versus your right to do what's on your property. There is always gonna be a conflict between those two. That's, you just can't get away from it. It's how you mitigate it and work through that. So that's what the, that's what the town planning and council does is we try and work through those issues. And that's why we have the public hearing. So you're all able to come to this. I, I probably shouldn't even bring this up. I sat through a public hearing in Heber City this week. Uh, everybody probably knows where the Ford property is. They was, uh, moving that from a R one to an R three. There will be, that's five point two, three acres, twenty-eight houses on that property.
Where is that?
The Ford property.
Well, Daniel's road.
Yeah. Twenty-eight houses backing up one of that road.
Daniel's road and Weeder Road.
Unfortunately, you know, that's, and that's just that little section that was car bound when it.
Oh, Pyter.
But I mean, that's what, that's what's happening. And so we see a lot of that. There, there were quite a few folks that came out.
Down from the church.
Uh, but there is.
Same side of the road is a church. Okay.
They pay a lot.
That's why we're Daniel.
That's why they pay the money for that.
Happening to us.
And again, you have your property rights and they have their property rights. And so that's, that's where we try and divest. Go ahead.
I was gonna say, and, and you've kinda reiterated it, but that's the whole reason for planning is, is you, you wanna have plan, you wanna have like, because like generates the same.
Right.
If you put commercial in the middle of residential, like is gonna follow. It's the way it works. In, in real estate, it happens that way.
Yeah.
Because as soon as you open that door, that door's open. And my two-year-old will walk through any door that's open. And, and, and commercial real estate people are about the same as my two-year-old. So it, it is. They're gonna walk through whatever door's open and, and as soon as you open up that door, it's done.
Yeah, when, when you had had a question about your kid, children be walking down to get to the school, there will not be access through Daniel to that school. So you might wanna keep that in mind before you set them down.
And that, and that settles me down a little bit. It does. But I still, I still worry about my, my neighborhood where there's tons of beautiful kids running around. And you've got, and, and for lack of a better word, you've got the trucker person, which is completely wrong of me to say, especially in this type of form. But yeah, that scares me.
Whereas you got the teenager texting.
It, well, that's, I, I don't disagree. And it scares me. And that's, that's a naive father speaking and I can say that, but the aspect of the whole thing is, I, I love jumping on my, on my road bike and riding down Mills, Mill Road and feeling like I don't have to worry about a damn thing. I love it. I, I, I like being able to go for a walk with my wife who, you know, when we were, when she was pregnant, go out and walk down three thousand and not worry about being hit by a car. It, it's what Daniel's is. Now, and I say all of this, really my, my opinion of if it's just over there and that's it, I hate to say this out loud, but that doesn't bother me as bad. But I am worried about there being a right of way to Mill Road and affecting the whole community that way. That's where the concern comes.
Yeah. Well, and another thing that wasn't brought up here was the general plan that we have in the town of Daniel, which, uh, spells out that the commercial corridors will be along the highway corridor. Cause we're kind of in a different situation. We don't have a main street here. We don't have a business district. So as we stormed the town, we looked at the commercial corridors. Where's the commercial gonna be? If it doesn't impact the town as much, and then they enter right onto the highway. So, it, it does say that in the general plan, so this does follow that general plan guideline. Uh, I, I don't want to take up everybody's time, because it's a public hearing. Go ahead.
We have monitoring wells in place for this place, because they don't, trucking companies, gas stations, they all have chemical leaks.
We have worse than a monitoring well if you drink some water out of his well off site.
Good. Need monitoring wells. Whatever type of chemicals are going on the ground, might affect the drinking.
Yeah, and, and the EPA is getting way tight on this. I mean, as, as we see these things, everything's evolving. Uh, the Environmental Protection Agency, who does the water, runs, runs the division of drinking water, they're pretty stringent on, on what's showing up. And so, the testing is becoming more and more, I mean, we got tests now as a town water company that, you know, we used to send in one month, and now it's just ridiculous what we spend. And I say ridiculous, because if somebody got sick, we'd spend more than some. Obviously, we're regulated a lot heavier. We had to get certified operators, and it just keeps going.
Of course, property does go there, and we do have, it's required.
No.
Why not? Can you, can you step in so we can hear you? I said, um, because it's a business, and they're gonna be dumping chemicals on the ground or they're not supposed to. But if they do, then they're gonna require, um, monitoring wells to monitor the TDCs and other bad things we're getting, because a lot of people have wells around here. They're on well water still. We can't have contaminated well, wells. It's all one big aquifer under there.
That is a good question, and I, I do know that, uh, anyway, she does, they do have sampling wells throughout the valley. And so, if you look and look at the map that they produce, from the high side of Eber coming down, you can see that the carcinogens coming in the wells, coming towards the Eber City well also. So, they are monitoring that, those movements of soil. And is there more development, I mean, more houses, more sewage? I mean, it is, everything depends.
Eric, can I comment on that?
Yes.
I don't know how many people in here are aware of it, but we are also, as the town of Daniel, going to be, according to the plan, the recipient of sewage water from up on the hill. Clear up to the, uh, the new Park City developments. They're gonna put it in our irrigation water, and we're gonna be sprinkling that water out through our irrigation system if and when it happens. That's what's on the plan right now. So, as far as monitoring wells, though, we should have monitoring wells for that as well. I, for one, am not happy about knowing that our irrigation water will have Park City sewage in it.
That's something that you caught up with the irrigation.
Yeah, and that's completely irrelevant for this meeting.
Yeah.
Now, you wish you hadn't came out, huh? Make you look at that glass of water a little longer tonight.
Mark, can I ask you a question on containment of, of different oils and reasons for different, like, uh, how you mitigating those?
I'm not there yet.
But they're still in the planning state.
Yeah, I mean, currently, where I'm operating at, I, I take my used oil, put it in drums, and I re, I re-burn it. I use a waste oil furnace to re, to use the waste, to get rid of the waste oil.
Okay.
So, I mean, antifreeze, I have to keep, but, uh, I can't just go and dump it out in my backyard. I put it in a container, I have to pay to get rid of it. And that's, that's just the industry standard. You either burn it up, you know, with the waste oil, a lot of people use waste oil furnaces, uh, in their, uh, chops. It's not uncommon, it's all over the valley already. Antifreeze has to be recycled. They recycle, people come get it. So, you just, I don't just dump it out. That's, that's a thing of the past.
I have a question, Mark. Do you have containment places to put those containers in? To contain it, so that if it does leak, it doesn't get out?
Well, let me just check in there.
When we're getting into...
Yeah, we're, we're going into the point that he will have to meet all the standards that one, this development. You know, if anything goes forward, he'll have to meet those. But this is the time, we're just trying to get a bill for them, for the rezoning.
Well, I, I just got...
Those would, those would be, because I know that from my commercial side that I'm from, you have to have your oil and that scored in an area that's contained in.
Yeah, at the Kennecott, we have to have a containment hurdle bin. Even though they're in containment.
Because if you look at like Jiffy Lube and that down there, and they're all contained. And it's just, like I said, the EPA gives you certain guidelines.
Another thought, just a suggestion, Kennecott, could we run a little haul truck up and down the road that creates dust? We water the road down, that keeps the dust down. For environmental, environmental people that have health problems.
Yep.
Suggestion.
I can, it's all money. I, I, I can, it only goes so far. I can do what I can do. I don't do things on purpose. Mother nature has a lot to do with it.
Okay, do we have any more public comment on the zone change?
State your name.
Jesse Mary. And I just had a couple, a couple quick questions, mostly from the council. Um, has there been any requests made by the council for if this is changed to commercial? That McCallister do anything to improve the property? Um, maybe besides the berms, put up trees? I mean, that was requested of, uh, for instance, Beanley having been back on that property, which also requested that they put trees to help keep the noise down. And also, is there any restrictions being placed on if this is turned commercial? What is, what's, what he can do with it? Does he have to come back in if he wants to change, uh, to some other use? Or anything like that? And that's my questions, mostly from the council. Has there been any indication from the council, um, to McCallister as far as?
Super, that's a great question. And that's probably on a lot of people's mind, too. So, let me answer that. Um, when those restrictions come in is when there's an increase on the property. So, if he stays within what he's doing, he just continues with what he's doing. If there's an increase, and, and that's when the Beanley came in, as they went for the big, the big...
Would you say building a building?
Building a building will make him comply with the new zoning requirements. Uh, any improvement on site, he'll have to comply with.
More trucks?
What's that?
More trucks?
Yes, if he gets beyond the, the seven that's allowed, that they, yeah, go ahead.
So, I just have a question on that. Before, uh, or just a statement, before that, the previous owners, they had more trucks in there, and supposedly, there was pictures sent, and nothing happened of that. He kept the amount of trucks. So, how are you guys gonna regulate and make sure that, that there is, is, you know, a limit set on that? Or will there be a limit set on that?
That's another great question. Because nothing happened, it was two nights of me up there watching that play, so I'm glad nothing happened, because I did miss that sleep at home. But, I can tell you that I did come back with Travis. We talked about it, he had a guy that stopped in, dropped his truck off. It was on the Thanksgiving weekend, he went in to visit family, went down. The truck was there for six hours, it was back on the road. That was one of the instances. The other one was, when I got out there, there was only seven, there was only six trucks when I got out there. So, both of those were investigated, so...
Oh, go on your way, sorry.
Oh, sorry, I'm done.
So, is the seven-truck regulation, is that gonna continue on the commercial? His or does he, does that fall off?
It, it's still a continued use. What that does is brings this property more to compliance with the uses there. And so, that's why, that's why I think the council was even directing this, heading this direction, is because we have a use now. It's being taxed as commercial, it's being used as commercial, but yet it's, it's not in a commercial law. And so, I think that that's why it even got to this point of, of having the public hearing, getting public input, and looking at this direction, so.